For regular meeting, February 8th, 2021, and special on January 9th, 2021. Them seven respondents, animal control officer report, December 2020 and January 2021. United States Department of Commerce Census 2020, thank you. Item 8B, a reminder of the special city council meeting Monday, March 1st, 2021 at 5:00 PM for the purpose of interviewing city administrator slash clerk treasurer. And then item 8C, reminder of the AEOA free food distribution at the arena this Thursday, February 25th at 2:00 PM. And item 10 claims payroll and receipts.
I'd like to pull 8B out of there for the special meeting next week. I got some discussion items on that tonight. So if we pull that out of the agenda, please. Any other problems with the agenda consent agenda?
Just another comment in regard to the consent agenda. I would, with the, the animal control officers report and the Blake officers report, I would like to propose scheduling a full council meeting with those two officers in the near future to review some of the ordinances that pertain to the things that may be happening and not happening and just so we stay on track. So I don't know if this would be the time to bring it up or I'm fine with, with everything that's, that's in the consent agenda. It's just an item that was in there that brought it to my attention, so.
Dan, the reason I pulled the, the 8B for the interviews next week, I think we need to get together and pick some questions for next week. So I thought I'd call a quick special meeting this week to go over and for the council, do you want to throw it on there or do you want to wait?
Actually, the girls are going to try to come up with some info for me, so maybe we'll do it early in March, I think.
Okay.
Time.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Not hearing any motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items. 8B withdrawn.
Motion by Councillor Zinn, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Kramer, roll call.
Councillor Zinnz.
Yes.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. Nobody in the guest citizens forum, Tammy?
No, not that I know of, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item reports from staff recreation golf arena, Wade West?
It's going very well at the arena. He's been pretty good with COVID stuff as far as masks and we're keeping up on a clean between in between game, otherwise everything's all down there. So that's about all I have.
Wade, I have a question for you. I've been, I've been doing some dealing with Minnesota power. They're looking for some storage for some solar panels for a couple of months. When, when do you plan on having ice off of the arena?
Well, as of right now, we have a regional tournament on March 9th through the 21st. So the ice should go off the 22nd, unless one of our teams happens to make it to skate.
I missed your goal or it would go off when?
Either the 27th or 28th depending on wins or losses by our teams.
Okay, all right. Council, I'll, I'm going to be discussing this situation with you at the EDA meeting. So anything else, Wade?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Jake?
Not a whole lot this time around. Got the mercury minimization plan submitted and the Empires water usage report was submitted. Working on the annual utility rate survey and the consumer confidence report. And then today we had a gas leak discovered by the Lucky Seven, so public works blocked off the road. We marked utilities. They're going to be digging out there today. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Jake. Melanie?
Yep.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Tammy?
I don't have anything tonight.
Attorney Brunfeld, Mitch?
I'm here, nothing tonight, just might have commented on some later agenda items.
Okay, thank you. We'll move down to reports from city councillors. Councillor Zinnz?
Nothing tonight.
Councillor Pop?
Just agenda items, Mayor.
Okay, Councillor Kramer?
Just have comments on agenda items eight, old business.
Okay, thank you. I got a pretty quiet one today. I don't know if you're all aware of it, but I contracted COVID myself. I'm home on quarantine and I been, wasn't feeling very good last week, but I'm getting a little better. Had a little downturn today, but the Zoom meetings are working for me right now. So I just have consent after that too. Moving on to old business. 8A, COVID-19 governor's emergency executive order. Anybody got any comments on that? Not hearing anything and then opening the community building. Tammy, did you help put this together?
No, Becky actually took care of it while before she left, while I was on. She said she came up with a draft addendum to add to the reservation agreement. And I do believe she had sent it to Mitch too, to take a peek at.
Mitch, have you looked at this draft White Lakes Community Building policy?
I'm mayor and council, I have, and it, it looks fine to me.
Okay. Okay, um, do we need to make a motion to approve that draft? And I guess the other question is, is, is any of the council interested in opening that building yet?
I guess. Mayor, just if I could chime in there, yeah, I think that, I think the council needs to make the threshold. I think you've identified it exactly. The council needs to make the threshold decision first on whether even to reopen. And then second of all, yes, we would need a formal motion to approve the, the addendum for COVID related issues.
Okay, Councillor Pop?
Yeah, I think, you know, with the, with the revision to the, to the governor's executive order, I think that, you know, there may, there may be some family gatherings that may now comply to those restrictions, you know, with the, with the capacity limit and, and so on. So I wouldn't have a problem. And then that would also then allow the, the cops to be able to meet in the basement there. So I guess I wouldn't have a problem if we were to consider opening it.
Anybody else?
I'm good with it.
Tab, you shaking your head? You okay too?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the addendum to the City of White Lakes Community Building Reservation Policy due to COVID-19 pandemic and to comply with state of Minnesota Governor Walz's Emergent Executive Order 21-07. Effective February 22nd.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Pop, is there support?
All support.
Support by Councillor Zinnz, roll call.
Councillor Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on down to the arena, request from residents to walk inside gym. That's, I hadn't heard about this yet. Tammy, are we getting some or?
I do believe Becky said that she's had a couple of requests. I don't know if Wade has gotten more?
Wait.
No, I haven't got, I haven't had any.
I know last week after the Masabi Youth Sports Director had kind of given his spiel and wasn't Christine going to get together with Wade to talk about possibly opening up the gym for more activities? And I know Chris isn't on tonight, so we may just have to delay that decision until the next council meeting if we're going to open anything more up there or.
Are you okay with that, Wade?
With, with, with what?
Well, I think Wade can have a chat with Councillor Peterson next week and we'll bring something back to the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Moving on to Fisherman's Point Campground, campground opening April 19th and it's in your, it's under in that packet, A. So I see April 1st, they can start reservations, Tammy, is that correct?
Yes.
And the camp, campground is opening April 19th.
Well, so Patty had emailed Becky with questions about when the online reservation was going to start and when the campground would be opening. It sounds like they're going to be back sometime around March 26th. And so I emailed Patty and just said that the online reservation system is ready to go for April 1st. And I looked last year, um, the campground opened on the 23rd, which was a Thursday. So if it followed that same pattern this year, it would be the 22nd. But I just asked if she had any like, you know, the 19th would be a Monday and that's fine if that's what it's set at. But she also wanted to get on the, um, first April meeting to talk about their 2022 contract because that hasn't been determined yet. So I told her that the first, I believe the first council meeting in April would be the 12th.
Yep.
So I haven't heard back from her, but I just told her we could put her on the agenda for that. And then I said, I said, if she had any other questions, she could let me know. She just had questions about like how things are going at City Hall with the COVID restrictions and all of those things. And so I just let her know about the new front window and the new phone tree.
Okay. Um, yeah, they're going to be back end of, end of March, right?
Yeah, she said she thought the 20, around the 26th of March. Um, but yeah, the, the website does not say what the first camping day is, so I wasn't sure. I just looked at what it was last year. And like I said, it was the 23rd, which was a Thursday, but if it's set for the 19th, that's, you know, I'm going back by then.
It's not set for the 19th. Kind of sounds funny to me to open on a Monday in, in April. So yeah, whatever you think, I mean, the next weekend or whatever. You know, we, we set that, so.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait to hear back from Patty and see what she thinks. I mean, they're going to be here two or three weeks before that, so we'll see what she thinks.
And Tammy, correct me?
Yeah, we need enough notice. Yeah.
That was going to be my question. We need to notice before the April 1st when we start taking reservations, right?
Yeah, yeah, Becky has this, um, this ad to tentatively go in on March 15th and 29th. We are getting questions oftentimes, let's see, a few times a day about when are you opening reservations, which we generally know anyway. But when can we come in as seasonal campers, as regular camping? So we're getting more and more calls every day. People are getting excited for season. So if we could know sooner than later, just to get everything published.
Sure. So I'll hopefully hear back from Patty in the next day or two, and then I can connect with you guys and I mean, do I just, do we just set a date then or do we need to do it at another council meeting?
Yes.
I guess I, I would be, I would be comfortable with, with you setting it, you know, once you talk to, talk to Patty, Deb and then city staff and you guys said it, I, I don't have an issue with that. I'm assuming we're going to be looking at somewhere to end of April. Dan and Dave, are you okay with that?
Yeah, the only, I think the dates are fine. I just a comment with possibly opening it on the 19th. That would allow some of the seasonals to come in there before the weekend traffic came in, which would maybe be a good idea. Uh, and the other thing that we need to clarify then is, you know, the bathrooms and they're going to be open, the showers are going to be open, so on and so forth. But we could discuss that at a, at a later meeting, council meeting. We, we wanted to disapprove the online reservations for the first and the campground opens the 19th, I'm perfectly fine with that, so.
Betsy said that there is a date already set for seasonals to go in. It was the 14th, the 14th.
14, okay.
Part of their seasonal time.
Okay. Yeah, we could, we could easily make it the 19th tonight and, and especially since seasonals are going in on the 14th, so. Do, Tammy, do you need a motion on this tonight or?
I guess we could, just since we're doing it right now, just in case.
Deb, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion on the opening of reservations and the opening on the, of April 1st and the opening of the campground, April 19th. Motion on that, please.
I'll motion.
Motion by Councillor Kramer, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor, was that Pop?
Yep.
Roll call.
Councillor Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. And then Tammy, if you would put that, uh, the, the manager's contract for 22, if you would put that on the first meeting in April.
Okay.
So just add that to that agenda, okay?
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Anything else on COVID? Okay, and remember the special council meeting next Monday at 5 o'clock. And the AEOA food distribution, going down to new business, 8A. Agreement for professional services between the City of White Lakes, Short Elliot Hendrickson for the 150,000 gallon water tower, number one at Laskin. Um, and the engineering not to exceed a 66,125. Matt, Jake?
Thanks, Mayor Reeland. I don't really have anything else to add. If you all have a copy of the, of the proposal in your packet, I can certainly answer any questions if you might have any. I don't know, Jake, if you've got anything to add to that?
No, I got nothing to add. So.
It looks really straightforward to me. S E H basically is going to be setting up the bid documents and calling for bids and, and doing the inspecting on the water tower. Hopefully mid summer sometime, we'll, we'll get that tower done. It's been budgeted. Uh, we did receive that $250,000 grant, which is going to help soften the blow on this one. So uh, if there's any other questions, if not, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councillor Zinnz, support?
I'll support.
Or if I call for pop, roll call.
Councillors Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. Item B, to approve the request of Dan Darbo dated February 9th, 2021 for a 50% refund of 2020 liquor license for the golf course for $330 due to the COVID. Discussion?
Um, I feel it's definitely justified. Uh, I would make a motion that we, we go ahead and owe all that credit.
Hey, there's been a motion by Councillor Pop, is there support?
All support.
Support by Councillor Zinnz, roll call.
Councillor Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. Um, items 9C. To approve the renewal of liquor license for Dan Darbo, White Lakes Golf Course for the 21 license period, period. Pending receipt of proof of insurance and approval by the East Range PD, no fee as done with other license holders for 21.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Councillor Zinnz, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councillor Kramer, roll call.
Councillors Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. Item D, request of bonds, restaurant and catering dated February 8th, 2021 for refund of 2020 liquor license for $200. Motion?
Backed.
Motion by Councillor Pop?
I'll support.
Or by Councillor Kramer, roll call, please.
Councillors Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. And this is a first. I have never seen this one before. I take it we must have some state of Minnesota property on the bike trail going towards the golf course? This is a new updated 10-year lease agreement. Is that what that is, Tammy?
I guess so, yeah. 10 years. Yeah.
Anybody got any questions on it?
Well, I only have, Mayor, I have one comment on that, on if you page through that agreement, I think it's back about, oh, let me count here, one, two, three, five or six pages. There's 30 items and then at the bottom of that is the signature of the last time, the way it looks to me, that that lease was signed. Oh, that's, that's the new one. Now, wait a minute, there's.
Yeah, it was.
That's the new signature, but there was also a page that it was signed by Marlene and Rick in 2010. My question was why? Yeah, so if you go way back.
Yep.
Four pages from the back. One, two, three, five pages from the back. It looks like the last time that this was signed was in January 26th of 2010.
Yep.
So a 10-year lease would have taken us till January 26th of 2020. I don't know why they're, they're referring back to 2018 on this lease. It's, it's confusing and I didn't, I didn't catch the date until later today that, on that specific timeframe, so.
Dan, if I had to guess, if you go to the very front page, I think when they signed that one in 10, they were probably two or three years late doing it, just like we are this time. Because the very front page, it says the record expired September 30th, 2018. Um, for 10-year period, I would imagine this one's a couple of years behind and that one was probably a couple of years behind.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess if you look at it from that perspective, it, that makes sense, so.
Any other questions?
The other thing, I guess, that even since that, that lease was in there, obviously the land didn't move, but the positioning of the road moved in accordance to the, to the bike trail. When they, when they redid Forest Highway 11 and then the route out to the golf course and the recycle center, that changed.
Since 2010?
Well, no, from the original date, when this was, this was initiated back in 78, from what I'm reading.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, it probably, obviously part of the trail is still on a state lease somewhere, I guess. I don't know exactly where the state, if the state property ends up coming fairly close to the river or where it actually is, so.
Yeah, it's a little vague on, on what part of the trail is actually on, on state land.
Right. But obviously, in order to do it, they, they had to come up with this lease way back in 78 when they built the trail. So there, there shouldn't be any question on, on it. It was just a little bit unclear to try to understand exactly where that property was. I'm sure everything's on the up and up, so.
Okay, um. Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Mayor and council, just a, a point of information for procedure. When you do, uh, when you do authorize this, if you're going to approve it, the, the motion needs to be that it's, you're approving the lease agreement, but also that you're authorizing the mayor and clerk treasurer to sign because that language needs to be in the official minutes as you, it's as noted in the cover letter here from the DNR. Uh, there has to be some official documentation confirming that the people signing are authorized to sign on behalf of the city. So just make, let's make sure that's reflected in that.
Okay, thank you, Mitch. And any other questions? Kind of a motion to approve the lease with authorization of the clerk and mayor to sign?
Um, commit, may I say something? Becky had had a note here that if we could also include that the fee is $680 in the motion too.
Okay, fee of $680.
I'll make that motion to that effect.
Motion by Councillor Pop, support?
All support.
Support by Councillor Zinnz, roll call.
Councillor Zinnz.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. And I'm sorry, I, I, I jumped past 8B earlier on. I pulled that because there's a council want to have a, a special meeting later this week to approve what questions we want to ask next week and also what supervisors we want at the meeting?
Sure.
You think it would be a good idea?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we need to come up with some, some sound questions and it could be a great idea to schedule some.
Um, Mitch, question for you, since we're doing this at a meeting, do I still need to wait the three days?
Well, Mayor, let's see, um, I think what we could do, uh, since you did have a, since this was part of the agenda tonight. Uh, let's see, normally you would have to wait the 72 hours, so, um, but I'm wondering if we could do this just as a recessed meeting. You know what I mean? Do it as a recessed meeting of the council.
I guess.
Yeah, I think what you could do is you could just, um, since it's already in, as part of old business of this 8, 8B, the city administrator clerk treasurer interviews. I think what you, you could do is you could probably just do a, instead of adjourning tonight, you could just recess the meeting to, you know, it sounded like you want to do it on Wednesday or Thursday. And then, and then just to take up that one, that, just to follow up on that agenda, item 8B, to formulate some questions for the interview process. So you could do it either way. You could do it at a, a recessed meeting, just recess the meeting and then just set the time when you're going to reconvene to take up item 8B further. Uh, or you can adjourn tonight and then just set a special meeting. But of course, if you set a special meeting, that's going to have to be posted 72 hours in advance of the start of the meeting.
Okay, so my question to the council then is what night works for you? I guess that'll depend on, on how I move forward.
Right.
Thursday, I have a Rams meeting at 6:00 PM.
Thursday, I have a Rams meeting at six P M. Other than that, I'm open.
I'm open any night.
Yeah, later tomorrow night or Wednesday would work for me. Maybe I may go fishing tomorrow. I don't know when I'd be back for sure, but if we did it. You know, five or six o'clock or something tomorrow or or Wednesday would work.
Okay, so the next question I have for you is, are do we want to do this by Zoom again or in person?
Well, with you being quarantined, we're pretty much going to have to be Zoom, right?
Well, I'm done Thursday morning.
Oh.
But Thursday night doesn't work. It could be Friday would be the only time that would work. Unless, I mean, I'm fine with either Tuesday night or Wednesday night. I think either one works for me.
I think we can discuss the questions by Zoom.
Okay.
Yep.
Tu- Tuesday or Wednesday, someone want to pick a night? Tammy, will you have those questions ready by tomorrow?
I only have the well, I have the one copy of your questions that I had originally given to everybody. I don't have any of the other. If anybody's turned them in, I don't have any of that.
Okay, I think Chris turned some.
Okay, I'll see if it's in Becky's office somewhere.
Okay.
Dan, you wanted to do it Wednesday preferably? Yeah, Wednesday would be probably be a little better for me if the if that works for everybody else.
Five o'clock, okay?
Sure.
Okay, I will readjourn this meeting at five o'clock on uh, the twenty fourth, Wednesday at five o'clock to come up with a list of questions for the candidates and the list of what supervisors will be will be brought to the meeting. Uh, Mitch, you want me to do that in a motion?
You're muted.
Mayor, that's that's your call. That that Mayor, that's your call as the chair of the me as the chair of the meeting. You can actually just at your own call, you can actually just recess the meeting until that uh, until that uh, next uh, date and time and you're gonna then call the meeting back to order.
Okay.
Anybody else? You'll just go you'll just go in recess. You'll just go in recess now. Okay, uh, I'm gonna put this meeting in recess till five o'clock Wednesday, the twenty fourth uh, for another Zoom, then Tammy, you'll get another Zoom meeting set up for then. All right, good night, everybody. Remember E D A meeting.
Okay.